Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Meeting of April the 10th. Looks like we've got a full house this evening. Welcome to all of you. And Madam Clerk, would you please call it the order and would you read your roll call?
Mr. Shyland?
Present.
Ms. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Present.
Ms. Reclu?
Present.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Present.
Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
And Mr. West?
Here.
Eight council members present.
Very good. Thank you. If you all rise with me, Pastor Bruce Williamson is with us this evening and he will lead us in the invocation. Thank you Pastor.
Producer. Heavenly Father, this sunshine on our land today reminds us that the seasons surely do change if we're patient. Now we can look forward, Lord, to the planning season. We'll look forward to being outdoors more. Schools will be ending in another month and we will transfer in the summer. Thank you for seeing us through the winter season. I'm grateful, Lord, for transition night here in city government. We have folks that are finishing their tier here and new ones starting tonight and I do pray. Thank you for those that have faithfully served and those that are coming online to serve the community in the future weeks and years of our tenure. I ask you to continue to bless our mayor and council persons and all leadership of this city, down to the boots on the ground that take care of our neighborhoods every day. I pray especially, Lord, you keep law enforcement, our Fulton Police and Fire Departments and first responders safe in the diligence of their duties and for all those, Lord, who dedicate their life to the work of our community. We are grateful. I ask you to continue to bless those that are part of the city family who need your daily maintenance with health issues. That would include certainly but not be limited to Mayor Benton and Chief Myers, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, Mr. Shyland, Mr. Moore, and any and all others who need your careful daily touch and maintenance. Bless this session tonight, the work that's done, the decisions that are made. We ask you, Lord, to bless them from heaven. All this in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you one more time. At the beginning of every council meeting, we set aside a time for visitors or residents of the city who would like to share a concern with the council, particularly if you're not on the agenda. And we just ask that you limit your comments to three to five minutes and also then identify yourself. So at this time, I'll invite anyone to come forward to the podium that would like to share a concern with the council. The council will not interact with you, but we will be happy to take your testimony or hear your concern. Seeing no one coming forward, give you one more time, one more chance. Okay. Seeing no one coming forward, believe Bill, you have someone you'd like to introduce?
The city had a retirement about 30 days ago. The Planning and Protective Services Director, Les Hudson, submitted his retirement and we wish him well. I've seen him several times. He's graciously agreed to kind of stay on on an hourly basis and he just kind of keeps track of his time and we call him as needed and he does still doing a great job for us and we appreciate the service he gave to the city for 22 years as well as the service he continues to give. A group of us got together recently and interviewed and I'd like to introduce to you the candidate that we have selected and he has accepted the position. I'd like Dennis Houchens to come to the podium. He's a Fulton guy. So if you just kind of want to tell the council who you are?
Yes, I'm Dennis Houchens. This is my wife Jenna. We have a two and a half year old daughter and I'm very thankful for this opportunity to serve the citizens of Fulton and I look forward to meeting all of the council members and employees of City Fulton. And with that, do you have any questions?
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. We'll now move on to presentation and approval of council minutes of March 27th. Are there any additions or corrections?
Move for approval.
Second?
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve the council minutes of March 27th. Any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Minutes are approved. Thank you. Move on to resolutions. We have a resolution, one resolution for this council this evening to certify the votes that were cast on April 3rd. Councilman West, would you please present Resolution Number 3300?
Absolutely. Resolution Number 3300, whereas a general election for the office of City Council was held in the city of Fulton, Missouri on the third day of April 2018 and whereas the County Clerk of Callaway County, Missouri, has certified to the City Clerk the results of the City General Election held on the above date and whereas the council finds that the following votes were cast to wit. Question, shall the city of Fulton impose a local use tax at the same rate as the total local sales tax rate, currently 2.5 percent, provided that if the local sales tax rate is reduced or raised by voter approval, the local use tax rate shall also be reduced or raised by the same action? A use tax return shall not be required to be filed by persons whose purchases from out-of-state vendors do not in total exceed $2,000 in any calendar year. Yes, 318. No, 422. For City Council, First Ward Ballard Simmons, 220 votes. Second Ward Mary Kay Reclu, 86 votes. Third Ward John A. Braun, 137. Lindsey Pace Snook, 63. Fourth Ward Steve Moore, 133 votes. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Fulton, Missouri as follows. Section 1, that the council finds that the city use tax question failed. Section 2, that the council finds that the following officers were elected and the City Clerk is hereby instructed to issue them the proper certificates and commissions. For City Council, First Ward Ballard Simmons. Second Ward Mary Kay Reclu. Third Ward John A. Braun. Fourth Ward Steve Moore. I move for adoption of Resolution 3300 at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 3300. Is there any discussion of this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Thank you. If those council persons, Councilman West and Councilwoman Gray, if you'd join me at the podium up here, I'd like to present. I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead.
We're very excited. We're ready.
You can tell when the mayor doesn't do his homework right. We'll move on and stick with the agenda. Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment of this council. Very good. I have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you read your roll call?
Mr. Braun?
Here.
Mr. Shyland?
Present.
Mr. Moore?
Present.
Ms. Reclu?
Present.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Here.
Mr. Simmons?
Present.
Mr. Stone?
Present.
And Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
Eight council members present.
At this time, we have the oath of office for our newly elected officials.
I don't know.
Yes, sir.
We'll just have the four of you stand together when Mr. Moore joins us. We'll all do our oath together at the same time. Raise your right hand, your key after me. I state your name.
I solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
Prescribed for the office of council member by law.
Prescribed in office of council member by law.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of this state affecting charter cities.
The provisions of all laws of this state affecting charter of cities.
And the ordinances of the city of Fulton, Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Fulton, Missouri.
And that I will faithfully conduct myself.
Faithfully conduct myself.
In the office to which I was elected.
In the office to which I was elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Now, the truth, Council, since you raised your left hand?
No.
We have a number of guests out in the audience. If those of you who have guests with you, if you'd like to introduce them at this time, I invite you to do so. Ballard, you will start.
My wife's here, Marilyn Simmons.
Very good, Marilyn. Nice to have you. And John, would you like to introduce your guests?
Yes, I have my wife Rhonda, my mother-in-law Carol, my son, my youngest son Noah, my father Frank, my daughter-in-law Paige, and my son Caleb. Did I get all your names right?
Thank you all, family, for being here. John and Ballard will be dependent upon both of you. It takes not only a team on the city's part on this side, but also a team of supporters and we look forward to working with all of you. So thank you for being here. We'll now move on. The first thing of every council is to adopt our rules of orders and procedures. Again, those are in your council packet. Are there any additions? Any additions or changes to those procedures that any of you feel that we need to make at this time? I know one of the things in the past that has been suggested is that we add the Pledge of Allegiance and I thought if you wanted to do that, it would be probably included after the invocation and that's, I've forgotten what item that is in your order of procedures. If we'd like to add that, that we need to do that.
I might be able to add that to our order of procedures, maybe?
Second. Very good. Okay. Thank you. We have a motion to add to the order of the council's procedures, the Pledge of Allegiance. And I have a motion and a second for that. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good. Thank you. Well now, we'll, is there any other item that you'd like to discuss concerning the order of rules and procedures? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt the rules as amended?
Second. Second. Very good. Thank you. I have a motion and a second to adopt the council rules of order and procedures. Any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes. Okay. One vote?
Yes. Yes.
I'm reading, I'm sorry.
All those opposed, no. Okay, thank you. Those passed. I think, I was always under the impression, and I'll just digress here for a minute, but the mayor would do that here once in a while, that if you did not vote, that a non-vote meant that you were in agreement with the order, but I was reading Roberts' Rules of Order some time ago and it said if you did not vote, that was a no vote. So you might keep that in mind.
Please be vocal.
Okay, the next order for our new council is the selection of a deputy mayor. So at this time, the floor is open for any nominations.
I make a motion and we nominate Steve Moore.
Second.
Thank you. Make the nomination cease. Second. Thank you. So I think the motion is that we elect Steve Moore by acclamation. Is there any further discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of electing Steve Moore as deputy mayor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? Your vote doesn't count, Steve. Congratulations, Steve.
I'd like to say thank you on my council college. Thank you.
Very good. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. This is an agenda that the council has adopted that we put housekeeping-type motions on or things that require approval by the council. And you can see that on our consent agenda this evening, we have two reappointments, one of Tim Wilkerson to the Fulton Housing Authority and to Julie Boyd rules to the Fulton Housing Authority. Is there any item that you'd like to remove from the consent agenda?
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Very good. Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good. Thank you. Now I'll move on to new business and I believe Dale LaRue and Ron Elliott are with us this evening from Fulton Country Club and I believe they have July 4th on their minds. Welcome, gentlemen. Always a pleasure to see you.
Thank you for having us. I'm Ron Elliott. I'm the president of Fulton Country Club and I'm going to let Dale take over from here. He's been doing this for quite a few years. Thank you, Ron. As you know, it's that time again. I would like to, Charlie James usually here and he couldn't be here. They've had a family emergency in our arts affair, go out to Charlie and his family. But once again, it's, 4th of July is coming up and we're here to ask for your support again. As you know, the fireworks, the community fireworks in the past, the city has been a sponsor along with the country club and we've shared that cost. This year is pretty much the same. Last year, the cost was $5,900 and we're going to have the same display. We really had a lot of positive comments on our display last year. We did bump it just a little. We also have included a certificate of liability insurance and I don't, Courtney, did I give you?
I do not have that.
Okay. Well, it, what it amounts to, that we add the city of Fulton as an additional insured and that covers all city administrators and employees with the city and that is a million-dollar policy per occurrence. One thing we are going to change this year, if you're familiar with the fireworks, we shoot them in the front of the house and to the left. When I started this, probably 30 years ago, that tree right in front of the ladies tee on number one was about this tall. And now it's just huge. We keep, as well as the trees on the left, and they keep moving us out. Now I don't know if this is a city ordinance or a fireworks ordinance, but they tell me we need to be 350 feet from the street.
It's not us.
Okay. Well, whosoever it is, I think it's a good ordinance. We plan, if we go east of the country club, there's of course the yard, then we have five fairway, four fairway, and then two, which runs right alongside of Wood Street. We want to come down on, I'd say four, and try to shoot our fireworks there. Another thing, the pyrotechnicians told us, it would be a much better display because right now, when we look at the fireworks, we're looking at them in ways. And they said if we could put it over there, we could turn it and look at it, it'd be a much better show. And we found a place where the Woods Street would be able to view it, the park, as well as the country club. And so that's our game plan. Now if it rains, I don't know how we'll get that truck down there, but we'll get some gators or four-wheelers or something to get our fireworks there.
Dale, are you talking about around 200-yard mark?
Yeah, yeah, I think that'd be right. Second shot.
Or third or fourth.
Yeah. But anyway, that's our game plan and once again, we would ask for the city's participation and...
Do you have any idea of the dollar amount?
$5,900.
Fifty?
Oh, well, and half of that would be, what is it, $2,950 for the city and then the country club would be responsible for the other half. And we do have pyrotechnicians, I should have mentioned that.
Yeah, I thought it was last year. You're right.
Yeah, it was the same last year. Really had a lot of positive comments on last year.
I thought it was a nice display. You guys do a great job. We appreciate that you're doing that.
Thank you.
I move we accept the country club's proposal.
Second.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good. I have a motion and a second to approve the country club's request for support on the firework display for July 4th. Is there any further discussion of the motion?
I just have a small question, Dale. Is there any concerns with St. Peters? Is there anything that we need to do with them? Any of that?
No, we're quite a ways from St. Peters. Would be closer to Wood Street and we, we're going to maintain over the 350 and you do aim them straight up. We're not trying to aim them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
We'll shoot them over the lake. I don't know. That's our game plan.
Very good. If there are no other questions, I'll call for a question. All those in favor of supporting the country club, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Looks like we're partners again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale and Ron, for being here. Okay. At each council meeting, we set a time aside for the members who have been given a concern or something that they'd like to ask about that's not on the agenda, to bring that forward. And at this time, I'll open that up and I'll do it a little differently tonight. Any of you who have a concern, please signify by raising your hand and I'll just recognize. Richard, I'll start this.
Yeah, just a couple of things I've got on hand. I was wondering if there was any update from Mr. Riley on housing on Sixth Street?
We have, we do have a hearing scheduled for that on May 7th.
May 7th. And also is the, I know at one time we talked about an ordinance on the little houses. Is that one anywhere yet?
We decided, if you remember, to take that to the Planning and Zoning Commission and they're having a case that they have to review in the near future. I believe it is in July?
I believe it'll be before then, but they do, they've taken this opportunity to kind of research that topic and I anticipate that within the next month, 45 days, they should meet and they'll discuss it again.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Appreciate you staying on top of those things. And Ms. Reclu?
Yes, I have a question. I'd like to know, I've had plenty of people, it's been a year now since we applied for the emergency light on C Highway in Tennyson. I'd like to know when that's going to be installed. Also, several of my constituents are concerned.
Yeah, we plan on staking that out this week, if not this week, early next week and having Locates called in so we can start that job. So, yeah, you guys have been plenty patient with us. I understand and Bill's, Bill's actually called me in his office and said, "Come on now, let's get it done."
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay. We, now, you know, this night is always a joyous night because we bring new folks on, we get new energy going on the council, but we also, tonight, unusual is we're also losing two council people who've served well. And Councilman Vaughn, would you please present Resolution Number 3301, which recognizes the service of Ms. Gray?
Resolution Number 3301, a resolution of recognition and appreciation to Beverly Gray for the two years of service as a city council member. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 3301 at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Ms. Gray? I'm going to tell you to start with you.
I've got to get on top of Mary though. Look at this, she's got to take care of. I'm by myself again.
She wants, she wants a really good picture.
You got a good picture.
Leroy, she wants another one?
Y'all moved too fast. We've been getting forward.
There you go.
And Councilman Moore, would you please present Resolution 3302, which recognizes the service of Mike West?
Yes, sir. I'd like to say that on this one, it gives me great exposure to read and it's not like losing a council member, it's like losing a friend or a partner that's been with you for 14 years. They might not agree on everything, but I can tell you, Fourth Ward and First Ward, Mike has worked very hard in his 14 years to bring, be a good councilman for each ward. And I say to you, Mike, what is that, 300 and some Tuesdays you've spent in the city?
Tuesdays, yeah.
So good luck to you and don't be a stranger. So I'll just read your resolution. Resolution Number 3302, whereas Michael L. West has ably and constantly served the city of Fulton, Missouri, City Councilman of the Fourth Ward from April 6, 1993 into April 11, 1997, and the City Councilman of the First Ward from April 8, 2008 to April 10, 2018. Whereas Mike has conducted himself in office of councilman with great regard to the desire and willing being of... and willingness of his constituents, and now, court these resolved by the city council of the city of Fulton, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, that the mayor and the city council of the city of Fulton, Missouri, on behalf of the citizens of the city, desire to convey an expression of their sincere gratitude, appreciation for your faithful and grand service rendered to this community. Section 2, that the clerk of the city of Fulton, Missouri, shall enter this resolution on the journal of the council, and shall deliver a duly certified copy there of the Mike West. I move this resolution adopted at tonight's meeting.
Second. Very good. I have a motion in second to adopt 3303. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good, 3303, you have passed. Mike, it's been a pleasure. I think I've been on with you majority of the time that you're on, so it's been a real pleasure and good work.
Thank you very much.
I have a short, three-hour speech, I hope that's okay. It's been a lot of pleasure and...
We're...Michael, we're used to it.
Yeah. Now you did it. Seriously, it's been a real pleasure, a real honor to represent the citizens, hope I've done a good job, and I wish you all well, and I do appreciate the friendships that have been developed while being on the council, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, consider Resolution 3303, which is a resolution that authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract for a new fence around Anderson Field. Councilman Shiverdecker, would you please present Resolution 3303?
Yes, sir. Resolution Number 3303, a resolution authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the contract with Fence Pro LLC of New Bloomfield, Missouri, for the Anderson Baseball Field Fence Project with the city of Fulton's cost not to exceed $8,342, and establish an effective date. I make a motion, we adopt Resolution 3303 at tonight's meeting.
Second. Very good, thank you. I have a motion in second to adopt Resolution Number 3303. Is there any further discussion of the motion?
I do.
Yes.
Is this a fixed-price contract? The reason I'm asking is, if you look at the...when I look at the contract page, there's a paragraph just below the paragraph that says $18,000 and change, that says the contract price can be adjusted. I don't understand...
That's pretty much a standard clause, 'cause you go into a contract with a known amount, but we may decide that we want them to do additional, so then the contract amount would be modified, through a...like, through a change order.
Okay, does that change order come back to us, then?
It would really depend on the size of the change order. If it was small and minutia, no, we would just go ahead and execute it, but if it was significant, in this case, if it was $4,000, we'd bring it back to you.
Okay. I'm new, I'm learning.
That's okay.
That's the way we learn.
That's right, that's it.
That's a good question.
Now, like, on the $10 million sewer plant, we might do a change order for $20,000, and it would not come back to you.
Okay.
We look at the scope of the project.
Okay, so, when this project is done, we would have a reconciliation of the cost. Hopefully, it comes back at 18,000, and if not, you would say it comes back...it came back at $20,000, or whatever number it was. Is that how it happens?
The reconciliation would not...would not, also, again, would not come back to the city council.
So, if it ends up costing 20,000, would we ever know that?
Probably not.
Okay. That doesn't sit right with me. We're approving a certain dollar amount to spend, and what I'm hearing is, you can spend more than that.
Understood.
So, okay.
We have also been known to have a change order for...that takes away, too.
Well, right, right.
So, you know, it goes both ways, but no, that's a valid, good point, we'll discuss that further, and we may need to make some changes on that.
Okay.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay, thank you.
The rest of you, if you...if that's not sitting well with you, you two, you let me know, okay? And we'll take it from there.
I had one comment on the other end, just for the...for the audience. This is, as Mr...as Ballard mentioned, this is an $18,000 bid, and the contract is for $8,000 in expenditures, and that's because our Great Parks and Rec Department received a $10,000 grant from the Kansas City Royals to assist in this project. So, it was a huge thing, and it was a competitive grant, I believe, and...
Kansas City Royals charities.
Kansas City Royals charities.
Mm-hmm.
So just, it was a great thing.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments? Mary, did you have...
No, I haven't.
Do I have anybody else?
That's fine.
Very good. If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving Resolution 3303, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, yes as have it, thank you. So that stands approved. Now, we'll move on to ordinances. We have one first reading ordinance. It's Bill Number 1499, it's an ordinance that repeals our current established historic districts, and establishes a new district, reestablished. David, would you like to address us on that?
Sure.
David is our president of our Historic Preservation Commission, or the chairman, excuse me, and it's good to have you with us.
Thank you, thanks for having me. The historic districts are identified to basically identify historic properties, and to modify this district is...it has no jurisdiction, we don't set any standards to it, it's basically for identification. Hopefully, that explains what we're doing. They have not been modified for several years, and we thought that they needed to be added on to.
Very good. I understand that the commission's been doing a lot of work, and I'm sure this is part of that.
That is correct.
You might tell the council a little bit about what you've been looking at and so forth.
Well, several things. The biggest thing is that we have been looking at working with the city council to come up with a plan where houses inside these districts would qualify...one program is that if a house is sold and it's used for owner occupancy for five years, that it would be eligible for a $5,000 grant to the new purchaser. Another program is doing with the commercial property inside the commercial district, to where if the facade is redone to its original condition, somewhat like taking the aluminum off of a commercial building, would be an example of it, where the city would participate in up to $10,000 to redo it. Of course, the city has not agreed to that, we're just working on identifying those properties, and this is part of the process of the district.
But our whole purpose here is to encourage property owners in these districts to maintain the integrity of the historic value of that property.
That is correct, that is correct.
Okay. And it's one of the things that makes Fulton unique, and we hear it all the time from visitors, and so anyway, we appreciate all your efforts here. Okay, any other questions of David?
Just one, Dave. Is there anything outside of the proposed lines that is a historic house now, where it might be in the future? If you're gonna go giving grants to people to keep their 5,000...get a $5,000 grant, where someone outside of that would say, "Hey, wait a second, I'm listed as a historical, but now I'm not in the new proposed area."
Sure, there is a lot of historic properties outside of these districts, and...
And what I'm asking is, the proposed versus the current versus the proposed, more so?
That is not part of...which is not...would not be in the district?
The cur...yes, that would be moved outside of the proposed district now.
If I may, David, the property doesn't have to lie within the district to fall under the historic preservation rules and opportunities.
Okay.
What this offers is more of an umbrella for an area of town, that they could go together and apply for certain grants, the city could apply for grants for that district. You know, if you just think of that umbrella, it gives more opportunity within these areas for some other stuff, maybe we wanna redo a sidewalk that looks historic, but it's multiple properties involved. That's the type of thing that a district allows versus an individual property.
Okay.
So it doesn't...it doesn't constrict anybody from following...
And my biggest thing is, is down the road, not having somebody come back and say, "Wait, under the old proposal, or under the old district, I was available for this," but what I...if I hear you right, Jeff, you're saying that they would still be el...and David, they would still be eligible for that same grant money?
And I believe...
Even though they're outside of the district?
David, you've expanded the districts, correct?
Right.
So I don't think we're losing...I don't think anybody's moved out of a district. I think we're just expanding the districts from where they are now.
With a little bit of an exception, I believe, well, for example, the city hall used to be in a district, it is no longer. The post office is another example. You know, we don't think of the city hall fitting into a historic district.
Right.
And right now, there is no grants, there is no...
Okay.
This is for identification purposes, and as time goes on, these districts are going to be added on to, because these other historic properties need to be identified, and that's part of what we're working on.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, very good. Not any further questions, I'll call for the question.
We actually need to do first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we got into discussion before, I didn't think it.
That's my turn.
Councilwoman Reclue, would you please present Bill Number 1499 for first reading? Title only.
Yes, Bill Number 1499. And ordinance...ordinance repealing ordinance Number 918-03, enacting a new ordinance in lieu thereof to reestablish the downtown Court Street Westminster College, Robertson and Bell Historical District, and establish an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number 1499 for final passage at this meeting tonight, tonight's meeting, excuse me.
Second. That's to advance for second reading.
For second reading.
At the next council meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, for second reading, next council meeting, that's not one.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion in the second to advance Bill Number 1499 for second reading. Although, is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good, we'll move that along. Next council meeting will be April the 24th. Our annual clean sweep Saturday will be April the 21st. And again, Parks and Rec is looking for organizations to participate in that. Our spring cleanup week will take place the 23rd through the 27th. That's when we set items that we wanna get rid of on the curb, and normally, our neighbors come and pick them up, before the waste guys do them, but anyway. And we're also going to, in conjunction with this, in Earth Day, the household hazardous waste centers will be open, and we're just on the second, four Saturdays of the month, through now, through October, and all you need to do is contact the fire department, set up an appointment when you wanna take anything out there. That would be paints and that type of item. Mayor's Prayer Breakfast will be on May the 3rd, at 6:30 at Fulton Senior Center. Tickets are available, they're $15 again. Again, the proceeds go to the senior center, and this year, I've invited Colonel Carston from the Missouri Highway Patrol, our superintendent, to join us, and hopefully, that will happen. That's kind of a tough time for her, so, but we'll plan on her being with us. And tickets are available from...at the senior center, and are here at city hall.
And for you new members, that means you're supposed to show up and be on time and sell five extra tickets. How many can I get you?
I'll have a ticket for you next time.
And Mayor, I'll pay my dollar for a shameless plug, Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast is this Friday, from 7:00 a.m. to...or from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. all day at the senior center.
Very good.
That sounds...
And the last item of announcements is pretty much for the council, so if you have any questions on that, just shout back at us.
Also, April 19th through the 25th is tax holiday for Energy Star plans.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's right.
April 19th through the 25th.
I'm not gonna ask for any more announcements. I think we got them.
Until we start paying our dollars.
The...I do not have a need for an executive session this evening.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion in the second for adjournment. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Very good, thank you.